Restaurants in the area that have been negatively affected by having to shut their business down. So if this plan works, we get the primary benefit of reducing hospitalizations in the most at-risk population in our community. And then we get the secondary benefit of providing a level of economic activity to businesses that otherwise would not do it. I propose, and if this is an idea that we like pursuing, we could fund, poor Shutter, we could fund all of this, I think really clearly from some existing economic development money. And potentially even, I think you can make a decent argument that we could fund some of this from the tourism money. I mean, if we're going to support restaurants, I think there's a good argument to be made there that we're actually preserving or working to preserve the tourism industry in this city. And so if we're able to do that, these are two piles of, piles is the wrong word, these are two funds that the city already has that, you know, we cannot spend, really start restrictions about where we can spend these things. And so, you know, these will be monies that we would be not, we wouldn't be taking away from essential city services, so think fire, police, streets, water services, the things we could do with monies that already exist to potentially make this a healthier community and limit the impact of COVID-19. So that's the idea. I wanted to put it before the council for discussion and to kind of see what everyone thought.
I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Urban before we get too far in. Mr. Urban, on the funds, could those funds be used for this?
Economic Development Fund.
You can.
Yeah.
Could you start that over? He broke up.
I'm sorry. With regard to the Economic Development Funds, you can use Economic Development Funds to protect existing businesses, but the way the program has been, at least initially visualized, is that that's an ancillary goal, not the primary goal. We can't use Economic Development Funds for public health programs or for, you know, feeding the elderly. Now, if the primary purpose of the program is to support local businesses who've been hit by the epidemic, then that's probably a proper use for Economic Development Funds. And the benefits to the, the other benefits to the community don't disqualify that, as long as your primary benefit or your primary focus of the program is to, is to support existing businesses in the city, that's one of the designated uses of those funds. With regard to the tourism funds, I don't think, as the tourism funds, or that fund question is written, I don't think that's going to be a proper use for tourism funds because it's not intended to draw new business. Now, I may argue that indirectly protecting existing businesses will increase our draw, but it's not, it's not designed to draw people to the community. I think those were the primary sources that I saw listed. With regard to the emergency funds, I don't think those can be touched for this purpose because the ordinance that restricts those funds sets them up only to support shortfalls in the general fund expenditure. That can be changed, that ordinance can be changed, but as it exists right now, I don't think that's going to be a source of funds either. So if you restructure it to be a primary, the primary focus of the program to support existing businesses, then I'd say Economic Development Funds are available. Of course, we leave it to the council's discretion of whether they want to spend their funds that way, but I think the Economic Development Funds, in a program that's primarily designed to protect existing businesses, might, might be an acceptable use of those funds.
How would, how would the equal representation work on that if we were using up for, only for restaurants?
I mean, the council has discretion to determine what kinds of businesses they want to support. I think there's, there's difficulty in implementing it. If you're only going to support one restaurant or one, you know, you're not going to support all restaurants, or not make it available to all restaurants. And so normally, these programs are, you know, you set up a fund, it's administered by an Economic Development Authority, and those funds have to be made available to all, you know, like businesses in the city of McAllister to apply for. And so I don't know how that fits with, with the program that Councilman Pritchard has in mind. I think it's probably something that can be done, but you do have to watch those equal protection and equal access, you know, when you're, when you're talking about public funds, you do have to watch equal protection issues.
I'm going to open it up for questions or comments.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Stevens. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Urban, if I can, please. Okay. Mr. Urban, on the emergency funds, and it's for shortfalls in the general fund, you said we could change that by ordinance, correct?
Correctly. The charter requires you to have an emergency fund that sets up its funding, and then it says that the Council.
Council.
And so what they've done in the ordinance that sets it up is they've restricted it just to shortfalls in the general fund. And I think that's, it's intended purpose is to, is to keep the city functioning on those, on those basic services that Councilman Pritchard outlined earlier. And I do think that those funds are probably going to be implicated the way they're designated now, but yeah, the council has control over how that ordinance reads. And I think that ordinance was set up in 2008 when the, when the fund was created.
Yeah. Where does, where does the money for the fund, it comes out of our general fund, correct?
It does, and I think we've, we've had some other sources of funds. I think several years ago, an ordinance was created to fill it from maybe on gas revenue. Right now, that fund exceeds what's required by the charter, but it also has to be replaced. And so if you use those funds, there is a filling mechanism that has to be replaced, I think, in the next fiscal year. Well, that kind of thing may cost.
That's controlled by ordinance as well.
That is correct.
Okay. On the nutrition program.
The required balance, I'm sorry, the required balance of the fund is not required, is not controlled by ordinance, that's controlled by the charter.
Okay.
How you fill that fund and that kind of thing is.
Okay. So here again, so the balance is controlled by the charter?
Yeah, the charter requires the fund existing and the amount of the fund, which is a percentage of your, of your budget, of your operating budget.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel, counsel, Vice Mayor Stevens, can you hold on for a minute? Could, could we do a roll call, because I'm getting some odd sounds, like a phone, like someone trying to call in. I just want to make sure we still have everyone here.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Stasiak, where does the money come from, the nutrition program? I know that that's a matching type dealer, it used to be, I know from our discussion in the past. Doesn't that come from tourism?
No, not to my knowledge. I don't think that's funded through tourism, I think that comes from the general fund.
So that money does not come from tourism for the nutrition program, it comes from general fund?
Not, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. So, one last question for Mr. Urban then. So if we change the emergency fund ordinance, then we can use this fund for an emergency that we see fit, correct?
Yeah, the council determines what constitutes an emergency and how those funds will be accessed.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Maybe a statement here. I applaud Councilman Pritchard for this because from what I've seen, that's apparently helping communities across the world and doing things is identifying who is the most at risk, isolating them, finding out who's, who's sick, whether asymptomatic or symptomatic, and testing them, and isolating them as well is the best things that we can do. And I'm very fearful of a small community like ours if we don't take some of these steps. I mean, I would love if we could test every resident in three counties, every state in the U.S., but we're not there yet, and we're depending on other people. But if we could take some, some steps here to support our restaurants, support our businesses, like we're going to talk about the next, that there are families here, to help those most at risk and do that, I think is a really, really good decision that we should weigh appropriately because the reason that these businesses are in the position they're in, and this kind of ties into the next agenda, I know, I guess as well, is that we've asked them to do this to save lives and to protect people. And I don't think it's a bad idea to support them through this right now and actually get them in contact to help people too. So I think this is a great idea, and I hope we can flesh it out, how it might work.
Mayor.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor James Brown, Councilman Brown, JB.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Couple things, we have a Stipe Center, is that what you were talking about, Vice Mayor Stevens? Were you trying to tie that into that?
Yes, sir, the nutrition program that, that I believe Councilman Pritchard has referenced kind of what we're already doing.
Okay.
As well, which we do, I think a very good job of that, from hearing in the past and hearing people talk about getting meals from it.
I go there. But is that a matching fund, Mr. Stasiak? How much do we match?
Currently, that program costs the city of McAllister about $260,000 a year, about 60,000 of that is a grant, about $200,000 of it is city fund, funding.
Okay.
We currently, as of last week, we're delivering about 140 meals per day, five days a week.
Okay. And they have a number you can call in to get your meals, right? You already put that out there?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, that is a good program, and I think we're only, we only do it at lunch, right? There's nothing in the evenings, is what I think Councilman Pritchard's trying to get it, what, it's three meals a day? Councilman, I'm sorry, Mayor, I had a question with Councilman Pritchard.
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Pritchard, are you trying to get it set where it's going to be like three times a day to the, the, everybody over 60?
I mean, that would, that would be great. I mean, really what we're trying to do is, you know, is just, is reduce the amount of times people got to go outside, provide some income for local businesses that don't have it, and, you know, at the same time, provide some, some health checks to these people. And so if we could get to three meals a day, I think that'd be great. If, you know, we could fund something that's two meals a day, that's great. Anything we can do to, to get people, especially in the at-risk populations, food to their house, I think is going to be very, very, you know, is going to be very welcomed by a lot of people, and it's, it's got a potential to really help us curb the spread of this virus in our community, and, and really more than the spread of the virus, but reduce the number of serious cases that are going to occur, are going to occur in this community.
Okay. One more question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
A comment. So if we did an emergency for businesses, how would, how would we determine which businesses gets, get the emergency funding? I think I was in here a while ago, am I right or wrong? That's probably another question for Councilman Pritchard. If we're going to try to do an emergency for businesses, how would, how would we determine which businesses qualify?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't have a good answer for that. I mean, if we're talking about providing relief directly to businesses, I mean, I think that's something that we could, you know, we'd publicize, you know, there are, you know, through traditional media, through social media, potentially get applications. I think that's something that, you know, we could, you know, existing city, city staff could filter those out. We could, if we're doing aid to businesses, we could potentially work with lenders that are already in that space to filter applications out. We could potentially work with the SBDC staff that we have already to filter people out, people out. So I'm not really sure the process, but, you know, again, not again, but aid to businesses would be a decision, you know, funding that ultimately is done at the Economic Development Authority level and/or the council level.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, this is Councilman Cox, I have a question for the city manager.
Go ahead.
City manager, on the, actually, it's a two-part question, on the nutrition program, who prepares the meals and what's the requirement to sign up for the program?
Anybody can sign up for the program that's over the age of 62, I believe it is.
Gary Martin.
I mean, it's just, it's a meal program that's funded mainly by the city and our employees, the, a lot of that cost to provide that meal comes through the form of our employees and also through our benefit program. And then the, the food itself is actually provided by another organization, and I don't know the exact name of that organization.
Feed the need.
Feed the need.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions? I, I, Councilman Cox said he had two questions, I thought.
Yes, the, the second part is, is why wouldn't we just, rather than create another program, why wouldn't we just look at the existing nutrition program? And, you know, CDC guidelines says that 65-plus is your high risk, you know, the age for higher risk. The nutrition program is 62-years-old, so why wouldn't we just look at enhancing the nutrition program rather than trying to recreate something that?
First and foremost, Councilman, this is Pete Stasiak, we don't have the personnel necessary to ramp up that program to the levels that we're talking about. We, not only do we not have the personnel, we don't have the capacity at the nutrition center in order to develop a program like this.
Okay, thank you.
If this was to grow to the levels that we're talking about here, we would definitely need partners to make this work. And, 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 and we would also need those people to deliver those meals. When you're talking about, we're delivering 140 meals a day, and we have a number of people that deliver those. Now you're talking about a pretty large army to go out and deliver these meals on a day-to-day basis.
Mayor, this is Councilman Pritchard, can I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I think using the existing nutrition club as some sort of model or platform and expanding about what it does is a, is a good idea. I also think if this council wanted to allocate funds from somewhere to begin this program, we would be wise to find some operational partner in the community to pull this off for us, because, I mean, the city manager's right, I mean, you know, this is going to be quite a logistical undertaking to get all this done, from, you know, buying the food to preparing the food, however that happens, and then actually delivering the food, and then, you know, if we added a healthcare component, coordinating with the healthcare professionals, so, I mean, we would be, we would be wise, I think, in our, we would be wise to be a funding, or one of the funding mechanisms for this, but find somebody in the community who has the skills and capacity to take this thing on an operational level, and potentially a number of groups. But I will say too, I mean, we're, we're at a time right now in this, in, in our world, where a lot of people who have, a lot, a lot of people have excess capacity, you know, people have been laid off, people can't do their normal jobs, so I think there's probably enough skill in our community to pull this off if we can come together quickly to provide some initial funding and a vision for what this looks like.
Mr. Mayor, this is Joe Urban again. I would just, I would just reiterate what I said earlier, that as far as Economic Development Funds, they're, they're not, the, the designated use of those funds is not, is not cleared for feeding our elderly population or public health. And so that's, I mean, we're talking about a program that's funded from the general fund, and the other thing is that I think Feed the Need is a federal program, we need to be careful about, you know, this discussion of partnering, because we cannot, we cannot use public funds to donate to charities. And so even nonprofits, we cannot, we cannot provide, you know, taxpayer money to public charity, I mean, to private charities.
While you're, while you're.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead, because then I got a couple as well, but go ahead.
What, the, the restrictions on the economic development money, where, where, when you reference this, where, where are you referencing?
Economic development money comes from a sales tax issue that was put before the voters of the city, and the, the language of that garners or, you know, controls the spending of those funds. If you want to re-task those monies, you have to take that back to a vote of the people. The people of McAllister approve those funds for, to attract new business and to protect existing businesses. Those were the only purposes, was a quarter cent sales tax.
What? Sorry. Where is that? I'm, I'm just sorry that I couldn't, where is that language? I haven't been able to actually find.
Yeah, we have, so, an ordinance created, the sales tax issue, I believe it's a 2000, the original ordinance was in 2003, but it was a quarter cent, it was done at the same time the educational facilities tax was done. But an ordinance created it, and then there was an, an actual balance issue, and so both those are available at City Hall.
Are you done, Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Hey, Joe, I've got, I've got a question about, you know, the, you know, we're talking about these, our employees going out and delivering these meals and doing even very basic health checks, does, is that, is that opened up a pretty big liability for us?
I don't think it creates a liability, I, I don't think that we have personnel qualified to do that, but as far as the, our liability is, is controlled by the Government Tort Claim Act, just like, just like everything else. And so I question our, I mean, what we're doing now is we're dropping off meals, we're not doing any kind of healthcare or health check or anything like that. But, you know, anything the city undertakes, if they do it negligently, you know, could, could subject us to a tort claim, but I'm more concerned, the city is a, is a healthcare provider through our ambulance service, I'm more concerned about unintentional HIPAA violations or something like that.
That's what I, that's what I was, that was my concern as well. About that. And I guess, the question I, I would have on this is, is, was the goal, is the goal to, to feed people, or is the goal to keep people from getting out of their houses?
Well, I mean, the goals are multifaceted, but I mean, you know, the goal, the goals is, is, is they, our goals are to reduce hospitalization risk, are to target resources, to target healthcare resources to those most at risk, and to provide economic relief to affected food service companies in the community.
Is Mr. Enlow still on the call?
No, he had to drop off, I believe he's, we have those 5:30 and 6 o'clock meetings with the group.
Because I believe, I believe that there, there is a plan that if there was a, a food issue, that they, the, the emergency response team already has addressed that and has a plan in place, is that correct, Mr. Stasiak? Are you, are you comfortable talking on that?
I'm not really comfortable about talking on it, I can try to get Mr. Enlow back on the phone, but the, that'll come down from the federal government. If there becomes a need to feed, feed those individuals, that group of individuals, then that would come through Feed the Need, and it would be a federal program.
Okay. I, I did some calling around today to the grocery stores to find out just how things were going with them and how their supply chain was, and with them, everything is, everything's working well, and they actually anticipated improving as things go forward since the panic bind is, is done. And I talked to the food bank as well, and they're doing all right at this time, so the, as far as the needs to feed people, I, I don't know that that need exists at this time, and I'm, I'm very hesitant to spend money that, from the sound of it, would have to come from the general fund at a time when we have absolutely no idea what our future finances are going to look like with the, with the effect of the virus shutting down businesses. Are there any other, any other questions or comments?
This is Councilwoman Harrison. All right, on, pursuant to what we're talking about, item number two, I don't know if many of our residents are aware, but there is a 211 number, and you can call and find about different agencies and the services that they render. Also, I want to ask if anyone knows if the Choctaw Nation is open and if they're doing any food distribution? Anyone aware of that?
I, I do not know myself, no.
Oh, okay. And also, at one time, the hospital had Meals on Will program in addition to the Stipe Center having a separate program. Is that still intact, Meals on Will?
I don't think so.
I don't think that they do that anymore, but I, but I'm not sure on that.
Oh, okay. And also, the school is providing one meal per day for, I believe, it might even be two, but McAllister Public Schools, they are providing meals, so that is a meal that students can get from ages two, I believe, to 18. And talking with people that attend various churches, some of the churches are providing for their own members too, so we have to remember that. And a good portion of our older population are in nursing homes, and so therefore, they are being taken care of. So those are some, a few things that I wanted to interject. And when we talk about the emergency funds, is there a specific amount that we currently have in there that we need to know about, or is that something we need to table for later at another meeting?
You're, you're, you're free to ask the balance.
Oh, all right, all right. City manager.
The emergency fund currently has a balance of about $3.8 million.
All right. And the emergency fund, City Manager, comes out of the general fund, correct?
It was funded mainly through oil and gas, probably 10, 12 years ago. The, the way that that fund has been growing over the last approximately 10 years is by interest income.
Okay.
We've just let the interest accrue into the account. That account started at about $3.2 million and has now grown to $3.8.
All right. Also, this is Councilwoman Harrison, again, I would like to ask City Manager, Mayor, City Manager Stasiak, another question. At this point, does it look like that we need to reserve some funds for after this crisis? We see that there are agencies and there are entities that are currently taking care of the needs of the people, it looks like it. So using some wisdom, do you think there should be some funds that we need to have afterward? Because there's always a problem after an event is over. So what, what is your input on that?
Well, Councilwoman Harrison, about two weeks ago, I kind of outlined what was happening here at the city, and prior to the pandemic hitting, because of oil and gas, we were going to be about $1.5 million under budget for this, for this current budget that we're in. So we're in the process of cutting $1.5 million out of the budget between now and June the 30th. We've been working diligently for the last week, week and a half, on projections for next year's budget.
Mm-hmm.
And right now, based on what we're seeing today, the best numbers we have is we'll be cutting somewhere between four and five million dollars out of next year's budget. When you talk about those type of numbers, our budgeted sales tax for this year is about $16 million.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to be short about a million and a half, get you to 14 and a half, and we're going to need to cut another 3.5 million on top of the 1.5 million for next year. So we have a huge shortfall. The problem that you have with our budget is the bulk of all of our budget is payroll and benefits. And a large, large portion of all that general fund money, 67% of it, goes for fire and police. So when you talk about. percent of it, goes for fire and police, so when you talk about taking a fourteen million dollar budget and cutting five million dollars out of it, it's going to be pretty devastating what we're faced with in the upcoming year, and the thing that I pointed out to you last time is, is there are five core areas of the city.
I remember.
Okay, there are fire, police, streets, water and sewer, everything else is an add-on. We're going to, it's going to be difficult for us to cover those five core areas in the upcoming year, so, yeah, we are facing some very, very difficult times going forward. Um, I also wanted to, I, I apologize for having to go talk to James, but, uh, you had a question about meals on wheels that was being provided through the hospital.
Yes.
About a year ago, that was merged into our Stipe Center program.
Oh, was it?
And so, we now, meals on wheels is now with the Stipe Center Nutrition Program, and that's how those people are now getting their meals, is through that nutrition program here at the city.
Oh, okay, this has been merged on, thank you.
And there, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Weldon, I had a couple of comments. I think we need to go back to basics here, uh, you know, this, this proposal covers a lot of different goals, uh, number one, I assume, is food, and we've already got in place a number of agencies that take care of people that need food, we've got twenty percent of our households in Pittsburgh County, uh, on the SNAP program, there are other programs, so I really, at this point, I don't think we can really establish there's a big need for food. The health issue, we've been talking about, and it seems apparent that we don't, the people that'd be delivering these things don't really have, uh, the skills or training to do any kind of a health, uh, screening on supporting our restaurants, uh, the federal government just passed a two trillion dollar bill, which is supposed to help businesses, among other things, there's another, last I heard, another four billion coming down the road, I don't know if it was for loans or what, but, you know, at this point, you know, there's a, I don't know if you really realize how much a trillion dollars is, but it's almost unimaginable how many, how much money that really is, so, you know, we're talking about the federal government trying to take over and make people whole in a lot of ways, including small businesses, and I think we ought to let them do that. The city, as Pete has just outlined, we're in terrible trouble right now, and probably it's going to get worse over the next year. Uh, to put it in perspective, if we had, as Zach has mentioned here, trying to get two thousand participants in this thing, at twenty-one bucks a day, that's forty-two thousand dollars a day, that's one point two six million a month, you know, and we're talking about trying to cut four million out of a sixteen million dollar budget, or fifteen million, and so, you know, the money is just not there, and we've got other agencies, and we got the federal government trying to take up the slack, so I think this is kind of a moot issue right now, that we don't really need to, uh, get into.
Are there any other, any other questions or comments?
Uh-uh, this is, uh, Councilwoman Harrison, quick, uh, question or comment, didn't we just recently have an audit, and it looked like everything was just going well, that somehow the auditors missed something that they should have seen and given us a warning that we were close to having some issues, or how does that?
No, the auditors do not forecast the future, the auditor.
Well, I know they wouldn't know it was a crisis, but.
The auditors are looking at what we've done in the past to make sure that we've done it properly.
So, based upon any of the projections, was there not enough money allocated for some additional, uh, unfunded projects or something? I mean, am I asking the correct question? Maybe I'm not, in other words, was there supposed to have been, maybe we should have allocated additional money, because we had some projects that are going on that some of the, um, contractors had to come back and ask for additional funding and things like that, or is this something that we need to talk about at another meeting?
No, that doesn't have anything to do with, uh, the funding mechanisms that are in place and allocating additional funds to those projects, those are infrastructure projects.
Okay.
What we're talking about is an oil and gas industry that fell apart nationwide that nobody really predicted, okay, that, that happening, so, when we put the budget together a year ago, uh, we weren't seeing indications of that oil and gas industry falling apart, we were basing the budget on what, what was happening at that time, okay? It's kind of like right now, we, nobody had an idea two months ago that this pandemic was going to do what it was going to do, we couldn't have predicted that a year ago when we were putting the budget together, just like we couldn't predict the oil and gas industry.
Right.
We have to base everything on what we're seeing happening at that time.
Oh, okay, because even with the oil and, uh, gas industry, that basically was in November and December, correct?
It was the end, yeah, it was the fourth quarter of last year.
All right, okay, anyway, I just wanted to know, thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, then we will, this is discussion only, so we will move on to agenda item number three, uh, discussion of a program to provide financial assistance to organizations negatively impacted by the outbreak of COVID nineteen, uh, Councilman Pritchard.
I think this one is pretty straightforward, um, so, there's, you know, there's definitely been a number, and Council Smith talked about them earlier, a number of federal programs, there'll probably be some state programs, um, to provide aid to people, organizations, businesses negatively affected by this outbreak, I think we should consider doing something additional, though, um, in the city of McAllister, and particularly, we should target, uh, these programs, these relief at businesses that are especially small, um, and, and that are potentially going to need additional relief from federal, or that federal programs provide, um, or have been unable to get relief from federal programs at all. I'm not, um, at this point, I'm not sure what the need is in the community, but I, I feel pretty confident there is going to be a need, I think there's an opportunity to partner with, um, the, I forget the acronym, but the Small Business Development Association, um, that we, that we already support, um, and potentially partner with local lenders who are going to be, um, dealing with some of these businesses and provide relief, whether those be grants, whether they be long-term, low, or no-interest loans, um, something like that, I think this is certainly a good use of economic development money, and again, um, on the tourism thing, I think we could make a really good argument, um, particularly if it's a restaurant or hotel, um, that making some loans or grants to those organizations, um, will, will help foster, uh, that industry, so, that's the idea, there's not a specific ask tonight, it's just sort of a, a discussion, does the council think this is something we should do, and if we do, um, you know, how would we move this conversation forward?
Okay, uh, I was on a conference call yesterday with Congressman Mullin, and he did outline a little bit, uh, about what the stimulus package provides, so I'm gonna, just gonna read, read from my notes here a little bit, uh, as for small business, forgivable small business loans are available, they're used to keep the payroll going, and this money can be used for mortgage, rent, payroll, health insurance, retirement plans, utilities, and they're available for us to two and a half months, the amount at two and a half months of, of payroll cost, uh, and if, if, if they have employees that have been laid off already, they can be recalled, and they are, they could be included in those numbers, uh, for the, for 501(c)(3) nonprofits, there's money available up to two million dollars at two point seven five percent, with the first year's payments deferred, and it can be a thirty-year payback, and for laid off employees that are not called back to work under previously mentioned programs, the state has waived a week-long waiting period, and the stimulus adds six hundred more per week to the benefit, however, it is important to understand that if you have been laid off and your job is offered back to you, and you do not take it, uh, you take it with your, your, unemployment ends immediately, and Congressman Mullin said, uh, he expects there to be a, a two-to-three-year, uh, economic impact, just from the stimulus package on the, the economy of the, the U.S., so, just, uh, just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a heads up of what, what the federal government is doing out, uh, down there, so, are there any, uh, any comments or questions?
This is Councilwoman Harrison, um, when will all this take effect? When will people, when can they expect to start receiving funds? Is this, do they have to wait until a certain timeframe, or how does, or do they have to apply? Will it automatically be put into, um, their account based upon the taxes, or what?
On the, on the twelve hundred dollar checks that, uh, uh, most people will be getting.
Yes.
He expects them to be, uh, start being mailed out in two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks.
On the, on the other things, yes, they would, uh, they would have to go, but all they have to do is go to any federally, any federally chartered bank and, uh, talk to them about small, small business loans, and, uh, it needs to be federally chartered, for sure, though, uh, can't be, it can't be a solely state-chartered bank, it has to be federally chartered.
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilwoman Harrison, again, we were talking about two different things, I think, the twelve hundred, you were talking about, that is, as an individual, correct?
Correct.
All right, the other one, that you were talking about, the stimulus package, that was pertaining to businesses, correct, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, they would have to go to a federally chartered bank.
Okay, that, I just want to make sure it was clear on that.
And, uh, and apply.
Oh, okay, and, uh, may I ask another question real quickly, uh, pursuant to our own, uh, city, uh, of Mca, uh, City of McAllister Economic Development Funds, something like that would really basically have to be utilized if we were going to do something, if a business person was going to do that, they'd have to wait until all this virus situation is all been over with, and before they would, what, how would they apply for it, how would, how would that, uh, how would that be, uh, done? Could, uh, either you or City Manager Stasiak explain that, please, thank you.
I think, I think Councilman Pritchard might be the one to, uh, to explain that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I envision, I envision a, a program that we would create, a, we could, we could name it, we could find some partners, but I, I envision this being something where we, you know, we are, on some level, you know, making the offer, soliciting, uh, existing businesses in this community, organizations in this community that have some need to come to us and say, you know, here's my need, we could set a list of criterias, and, um, you know, like a list of whatever loan or grant options, and then organizations could say, okay, well, I, I meet the need, or I have the need, here it is, and then this would be something that this council, or the Economic Development Authority, which is, uh, you know, comprised of the same members, um, could make decisions on a, on those applications, I mean, I don't, you know, I think it's unlikely that we're going to be able to help everybody, um, but I think, you know, we could do some help or do some good with this money, um, again, with this economic development, or potentially even this tourism money, or whatever money I want to spend, but, I mean, I think those two funds, um, you know, have a lot, we can do a lot of good with those, um, to support local businesses, and, you know, also to help ensure that once the threat from, the immediate threat from the, the COVID, um, outbreak passes, that we have businesses left in this community, they're going to be able to, to start back up and to begin to thrive again, so, um, that's the way I foresee this, uh, this, this, this idea playing out.
Would you, uh, would you expect that, uh, any business applying for this would have exhausted all the other, uh, uh, methods first?
You know, I don't, I don't know, I think something like that, maybe not quite that restrictive, um, actually, that's probably a good requirement to, you know, to require you to, um, at least to apply for those federal or state programs. One concern that I have, and, you know, I, I'm hopeful with, uh, the paycheck protection program, that that's going to move pretty quickly, but I am concerned that some of these federal programs are going to move, uh, not quickly enough to address the immediate needs of people, and so I think one role that we could potentially fill here is, and, is to move a little bit quicker than the federal government to potentially provide some short-term relief, um, you know, for people that just need immediate injection, injections of capital into the organizations right now, you know, you know, clearly, we have some restrictions on how quickly we can meet, or how quickly we could act, because, you know, we'll have to, um, I think, I think at a minimum, these are going to require some budget amendments, um, um, from the council and, and ordinance to do that, so, you know, we've got, we've got a little bit of delay there, but I just think we have an opportunity as a community to be a little bit more responsive, um, so that would be my only hesitation, was saying that you have to exhaust your federal or state remedies first.
Mayor, this is Councilman Cox, I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is for City Manager, uh, City Manager, how much is actually in the Economic Development Fund that could be used for this?
Net of all grant monies is about one point one six million dollars.
But is any of that earmarked for anything else?
It is not, well, yeah, we, we fund personnel, a couple of, of administrative people out of that fund, there's also some funding for some of the, uh, agencies that we fund throughout the city, so, yeah, there are some commitments, uh, but those are all budget commitments that, that will be coming forth for the upcoming budget year too, so, um, today, we do have , uh, budget constraints on it, we also employ a Economic Development Director out of that, out of those funds, along with all of his benefits, so there are some needs there for those Economic Development Funds.
Okay, thank you.
This is, uh, Councilwoman Harrison, uh, I want to, hopefully, this is not out of line, but we have, uh, Ms. Laddie here, is it okay if she comes up and talks a little bit about that, if she feels comfortable, because you were here the other day, and you told us a little bit about people coming, would you feel comf, if, if, if it's not out of line, Mayor?
No, no, she wants to, she wants to address it.
Well, would you feel comfortable doing that? Thank you.
What is your specific question that you have for me?
Uh, the other day you came and you told us that, um, that anybody would like to come and apply, or needed some assistance, that your agency was available, so would you reiterate on that, if you don't mind?
So, this is a, um, this is an opportunity for businesses, but we are all working together between me and the chamber, the Small Business Development, um, program, and it is an ever-changing process, and we have noticed, last week, we had a plan, we got more details from the federal government, and so, as of the first part of this week, we are regrouping and figuring out a new plan, creating one home website for all these businesses to go and apply to, so they're not reaching out to all of us, and we're all playing the guessing game. Um, we will have more concrete details, um, probably on that website by Thursday, um, I do know that they're, they're no longer doing the online application as of right now, and that, that site actually crashed, um, but there is a different process that we can get you, get everybody through, through a Small Business Development in a paper process right now, and then that will be expedited through them, and I do know that the federal government is working with the SBA to fix that website issue in the future, so.
Mayor, can I ask Ms. Laddie a question? Janice Brown, uh, can you tell me, once you get this process started, you might have told me this the other day, I'm in that senior group, so, so, once you get this process started, how long did it take for maybe a person to get an answer back, if they're trying to get, you know, a small one?
One of the great things that we have here in our community in McAllister is working with the Small Business Development Center, and they will guide people within twenty-four hours of going through the process, whether they make it or not, they're still going to guide them through the whole COVID nineteen process and figure out how to help their business, as to where, if you just go and apply to the SBA, we don't know how long it's going to take to hear back, because this is a brand-new process for everybody in the United States, um, but, we're, we are really, really, um, fortunate to have the Main Street Chamber and Small Business Development working together, we don't see that a lot in other communities, and so McAllister is very fortunate, and we are very willing to walk hand in hand with all of those businesses.
Okay, thank you, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, is it okay to ask Ms. Laddie the?
Yes, sir, I'm done.
Uh, Congressman, Congressman Mullin indicated that there's going to be a very, very quick turnaround in these, uh, he may have, he may have actually said the, uh, the, the time, the, the goal at the time, but I did not write it down, but he, his indication was that it would be a very quick turnaround from application to, uh, process.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, is it okay to ask Ms. Laddie the days and, uh, the days and hours that people can, uh, can, uh, go to those businesses for assistance, please?
Well, um, I'm, we're all pretty dedicated. Give us a call anytime. Um, I don't believe I have Crystal in the comments for the live feed, um, but you can go to our website, mine is, uh, McAllister Main Street, or mainst.org, that has my cell phone number, our office number, which is, um, forwarded to my cell phone.
Okay.
Um, Chamber, um, that's, I think it's McAllister.org, um, you could type it in Google and find that. Um, but we are all very, very willing to get you connected, um, as quickly as possible. Um, between all of us, we currently have about 220 businesses, um, in the gates, ready to get this process done. Um, and I also wanna add, um, to, um, James Brown's question, um, there, there are different stipulations. We have had a lot of businesses, um, they'll be watching the news, what about this grant program? What's the difference between the grants and the loans? They are two separate programs, and not everybody is going to be applicable for grant money. Um, it's going to be a process, and we do not have all those details yet, but as soon as we do, we will let everybody know through that, um, site that we're putting together with Small Business Development.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, uh, this is, uh, Councilwoman Harrison, I wanna ask Ms. Laddie quickly. So, your days are Monday through Friday, from what hours, any particular hours that people can?
Um, I'm not gonna quote for the Chamber, 'cause I know.
Oh, okay, but yours?
But you can call me 24/7. Call, text, email, anything, we'll get you taken care of.
Uh, on, on these 220 businesses, is okay to ask this Councilwoman Harrison, uh, what types of businesses are, uh, are in, uh, coming to see you? Is it just across the board, or just any specific type of business?
Um, McAllister Main Street has waived all of their membership fees during this crisis, and we have opened our services to Pittsburgh County as a whole. So, we are seeing mom-and-pop shops, we are seeing small businesses in our downtowns, old town, um, some bigger businesses are even coming to us, um, we're trying to make this whole thing work for our community to succeed after that. So, we're seeing a, a big variety of different businesses.
Okay. Thank you for answering our questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Are there, uh, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Weldon, again. I, uh, I think we need to be mindful of the fundamentals here. Our core business is not, uh, helping businesses with finance, and I know that's, uh, hard, but our core businesses, you know, are water, and police, and fire, and sewer, things like that. We just heard the City Manager say, we're looking at a budget next year about three-quarters of the size of this year, reduction in force, probably. You know, so, you know, I say, not just give peace a chance, we need to give the feds a chance, we need to give the state a chance. We got enormous amounts of money, and they're trying very hard to get it out to people. We got the whole bank industry, uh, trying to get them to give, uh, loans quickly and at very low interest rates. So, I think we need to keep our eye on the fact that our city is counting on our city government to provide those core responsibilities that we have, and this is not our core, unfortunate as it may be. We don't have much money, you know, a million point one-six is not much money when split up among hundreds of businesses, and then we have nothing, you know, in that account for a while. Let's focus on our core business.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a comment.
Go ahead.
This is really more out of frustration, probably, so I should probably not say anything at all. Uh, I think if we don't consider helping our businesses and doing something during this time and even afterwards, even if it's outside of our core businesses, and Mr., or as Councilman Smith said, I'm still trying to figure out how we gave five and a half million to somebody that was outside of our core businesses right now, but possibly, we can figure out a way to maybe generate some more income with a million dollars to maybe help some people here that are still gonna be here, hopefully, because if we don't have them, we're not gonna have any core businesses afterwards, because those families need our help. So, I'd encourage the council right now to really start thinking of ways, just like Oklahoma City has done, and other communities, to rally around these people. So, I think this is a good idea, and we should start working that way. Thank you.
Are there any other, any other questions, comments? All right, this was discussion only as well, so we will move on to agenda items number four, discussion of possible charter amendments to ensure continued functioning of city government during times of incapacitation of city council members. This, this, uh, Councilman Pritchard.
So, this is something that I had never.
Somebody probably needs to mute their, mute their phone.
Um, sorry, that was me. Uh, this is something I had never thought about until very recently, but, um, I don't believe there is a provision in the city charter that allows this council, in the event, um, of, you know, incapacitation, or, or even death of, um, members of this council, that if we have less than four people, we could take any action on anything. Um, and again, this is something I never thought about, but as this, you know, worldwide pandemic is occurring, um, it, it became something, or it's becoming something that, you know, I hope doesn't happen, but seems more and more realistic. Um, and so I think this council would be wise to consider proposing an amendment to the charter that, in times of emergency, if, um, you know, a, a number of the council become, uh, unable to. Unable to perform, um, that we could operate with less than a four-bike majority. So, um, that's the idea there.
Mayor, this is Weldon. I was just reviewing the charter, and, uh, we already covered this eventuality, uh, section 206, 5(c) says filling of vacancies. The council, by a majority vote of its remaining members, shall fill vacancies in its own membership, including officer mayor, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, we've got that covered, uh, even if there are only three people left, which is probably, uh, you know, not gonna happen, we do have, uh, we do have it covered. Or, you know, if the term left is more near, call for a special election. Doesn't say anything about a quorum there.
Well, Mayor, Mayor, can I just on that?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, the charter certainly says that, but, you know, I think there are, I think there is a potential for a situation to exist that, you know, we would be, as a council, would be unable to fill those vacancies, or have this special election in a manner that was timely. I mean, I don't, you know, I can't think through every different scenario, um, but there could be decisions that need to be made very rapidly to fund projects, or to make decisions about staffing. There could be a, a number of things that need to be made, um, prior to the time that we could have an election or appoint somebody. And additionally, I'll say that, you know, I don't know that in a time of crisis like that, that we would even be able to potentially find people to run for election, um, or to accept an appointment. So, you know, this would be very narrow, and I don't have proposed language, but the language would be something to the effect of, only in times of emergency, and only, you know, due to the, um, emergency, if the council is unable to reach a four, or, um, you know, potentially on the emergency clause, a five-person vote, that a smaller number, potentially just a, a majority of those council members able to disbase, something like that. I mean, it's, again, it's very narrow, it's unlikely it could happen, but as you see the effect, um, of this pandemic on communities across the world, those realities become, or those, those thoughts become, um, much more realistic to me than they ever would have been a couple weeks ago.
This is City, oh, I'm sorry. This is, go ahead, somebody was gonna talk.
Mr. Irvin, uh, could you address it? Uh, I, I had a little technical, so I may have missed part of it, but isn't there a, uh, a sort of, something on constituency of government?
Well, that, that is correct, but I think what the councilman is talking about is, during times of incapacitation, or, or the provisions in the charter don't react quickly enough, basically, for incapacitated, kind of person now, they have to meet, they have to, have to miss a majority of the meetings over a three-month period, and so if someone's incapacitated, obviously, if they die, they cease to meet the requirements of office and can be immediately replaced, but I think he's, he's more directing it toward times of incapacitation. The requirement that we have four votes to approve anything is in the charter. Uh, changes to the charter, by, by definition, have to go for approval of the voters, and so if the voters wanted to say, one, one person, you know, the only one, you know, uh, a, a one-person quorum, you know, could, could decide something, then they could do that. It'd have to be approved by the voters in the, in the change to the charters. But, um, I, obviously, the charter can't plan for every eventual, every eventuality. It's not designed to replace people who are duly elected by the citizens, um, in a, in a quick manner, and it sure doesn't punish people for being incapacitated for short periods of time, but, um, uh, you know, by definition, any, um, change to the charter goes to a vote of the people, and once it's approved by the voters, then, you know, it's, it's our, it's the law of the city, so there's no, no violating, there's no violating the charter by changing the charter, you know, by, by a vote of people.
Uh, and the, uh, the City Manager has certain, certain emergency powers in an event of that as well, doesn't he? For 48, he can act for 48 hours, and then?
Sure, sure. The other thing is, in Title 11 of the Oklahoma statutes, it provides for, uh, less than a quorum to pay bills and to do, uh, other certain things, but like Councilman Smith said, a majority of the remaining members can declare vacancies and either appoint replacements, or to call a special election. So, you know, if, if, you know, something terrible happened, and we lost, uh, four council members at once, then, uh, the, the remaining council could move on without a vote of four people.
Yeah. So, are there, uh, Councilman, you were starting to ask a question?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I wanted to see about directing, um, my question to, um, City, um, City Attorney, and he's already answered that. Does any of this pursuant to the Open Meeting Act, or is this strictly change of the, strictly a, a charter issue? Is there any difference, or could you explain that? This goes to, uh, to City Attorney?
Sure. Councilwoman, they, what constitutes a quorum, what powers the remaining members, uh, when there are vacancies on the council, all that comes from the, from the charter itself. Uh, there are certain, there are certain, uh, rules that apply to all cities and towns that, that the state passes, our power, uh, comes from the Constitution, the charter cities were created by Constitution. Uh, but, um, yeah, the, the, what constitutes the, the powers of the, of the city council, what makes up the body, uh, how many votes it takes to pass an item, um, what items have to be done by ordinance, and those kind of things are all located in the, the charter itself, so they're a matter of purely.
Okay, thank you.
Any, or, anyone else? This was a discussion item only as well, so that ends our scheduled business. I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? I want to thank, I want to thank Councilman Pritchard for, uh, putting the work in on this, and coming up with innovative ideas, and, uh, uh, we'll, we'll see where we come from here. And also, finally, last thing, stay home, uh, everybody, everybody has a reason to do it. Pick up, pick up and help other people's family, most importantly, the people that are working for the stores, that, uh, that are having to go, have many, many people at them every day. Let's keep as safe as possible. The store, and the entire family, go by yourself, check with your neighbors, especially your elderly neighbors, see if you can take anything else. With that, where would you call the ladies?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Laddie, appreciate it.
I need people checking on me. I'm very dang old.
I have both numbers, I'll call you.
Okay. Whose phone is this?
That's mine. Oh, gee.